Would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Garvey.
Here.
Mrs. Bros?
Here.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Here.
Mr. Kanziger?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
If all please join me and stand in face of the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. This is the one of the points at our meeting where we invite community comment. If there is anybody here about to ask the board, there's a few notations I'd like to read. Okay, great. Seeing them, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Could I have a motion for the approval of the June 3rd and June 19 minutes?
Salute.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. O'Toole, seconded by Mrs. Bros. Any discussion? I have just one edit on the June 3rd, first page, there's a name Sarah that has two As in it.
Okay.
Do you see it? Other than that, I didn't see any changes or edits to it. Okay, Mrs. Bruno, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for board recommendations, 5A and B?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Bros, seconded by Mr. Rankin. Discussion, so this is 5A is a recommendation. Due to the demands of managing the construction project, we'd like to allow Superintendent Hunt to roll over some additional vacation days that he was unable to take due to the district needing him to be present to manage the construction project. And then the second one is the recommendation for a raise for Mr. Hunt in the amount of 2% on his base salary effective August 1st. Any other discussion? Mrs. Bruno, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
At this time, we'll share our board committee updates. As I mentioned, each board committee, if you're the chair, if you could just let us know if there's a report. The Audit Committee, Mrs. O'Toole?
No report.
The Board Policy Committee, Mrs. Bros?
No report.
The Business Advisory Committee, Mr. Rankin?
No report.
Capital Planning Committee is me, and there's also no report. The Board Finance and Budget Committee, Mr. Rankin?
Sorry, but yeah, we had a recent meeting. Break the streak.
You have to apologize.
Yeah. We did have a recent meeting. A few board members and committee members who went over the financial reports. And we'll see the result of one of those discussions tonight in the finance report.
Thank you. For records retention, we did schedule a meeting for August 28th. So we look forward to cleaning up our records. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Hunt for the superintendent reports.
Thank you. Good evening. First report this evening will come from Kerry Ash regarding change orders for the construction project. And I'm Sean here as well, and asking to give you a brief update on the entry projects as well. So maybe an update on the building, Kerry?
Sure.
Then I'll do the change orders.
Great. So in terms of the exterior, we have landscaping going in. Our ornamental fence is going to be installed next week along with our exterior parking signage. The parking lot is asphalted and striped with our parking spaces. And the, all of the concrete sidewalks are complete. So in terms of the exterior, it's just about to be wrapped up. Actually, the architect is going to be doing their punchlers on the exterior tomorrow. In terms of the interior, at this point, we're just getting our final inspections. That's where we are. And the contractors are performing their punchlers. We are on schedule for turnover. We'll be starting your new scolier in your new building. Any questions? It's a short update, but I mean, it's really short at this point. Furniture's in, we're turning it over soon, so. Any questions?
Yeah, it looks great. We got an opportunity as a board to tour the building today. We're just blown away by the quality and everything. And it's just, it's a beautiful space for the community and students will be able to enjoy.
Much to be proud of.
It's been a great experience working with you and your family.
Well, thank you. This is bittersweet for you. I was telling Bob that it's probably the hardest part, because when you establish such a great relationship with the client, it's hard to say goodbye. And I mean, it's part of our business. And sometimes you're happy too, and sometimes you're sad. I am very sad. Our whole team is. It's been a wonderful project, truly. So thank you. In terms of the change orders, I'm presenting 37, 38, 39, and 40. Did forward all of the backup? Did anybody have any questions in regards to any of the change orders that are being presented this evening?
And thank you. You give very detailed backup minutes for us as we prep for the meeting, so that's probably why we don't have any questions.
Great. Let's turn it over to Sean.
Hello. Just giving you a quick update at the high school regarding the entrances projects. At the high school here, we have all the aluminum up. The doors are hung. Ninety percent of the glass is in. We're just waiting on some electrical devices to finish out. With all the cabling run, so that all the, all the security devices when they get installed can be brought on board. So we're really only a couple of weeks out there from being 100% done. Gurney is right behind it. We have all the aluminum in. We're hanging doors this week, running cable next week, and they'll be right behind it. So everything there is going pretty much on schedule. Waiting on a few pieces of parts to come in, and then we'll be ready to turn it over. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Also, there's a little bit of pavement going on outside, so the progress on this campus exterior wise. Chris is doing a great job kind of monitoring that. It is getting totally wood. Now, pavement coming in. We're seeing new signages around the campus in the next couple of weeks. I'm going to go on to item B in the report, and this is more just an update in response to some activities that were placed last week. There was a article in the paper regarding that lighting plan and hospital day of school, and I thought it appropriate to at least give you an overview. You have kind of a timeline in front of you, which was part of the submission too, for our variance request to the Village of Chagrin Falls. You certainly can have a look at that in more depth. I'm just going to talk about the end here, and what's gone on the last couple of months, and then happy to answer any questions which you might have. So around April 15th, we received a complaint from a resident regarding that post on East Washington in terms of the brightness. And we're in the process of figuring out or planning, programming all of our lighting systems. We have the ability to be at 100%, we have the ability to dim, we have the ability to kind of over time at night down to a certain percentage. All that programming is still ongoing, so if you walk there tonight, only certain lights will be on because they do that in the evening. So that complaint came in, and at that point, it was determined that we needed to come remembering our lighting plan to plan and zoning at the village level. So on May 20th, we went for the first meeting. Mr. Wolfter was there along with representatives from Stan Tech. At that meeting, there was a variety of things discussed, and they asked us to investigate and evaluate a variety of options. Things such as, will the cost be a little bit lower post? Will the shield do? Dimming, all of those things kind of were discussed. So we kind of took that as homework and went and researched and got figures, and Gobing helped us with that as well, to kind of bring back options or the information that was requested. The June 19th meeting of planning zoning was unfortunately canceled because we had too many people out of town. We then went back on July 15th and presented the information that they requested, as well as an option that we kind of came up internally with as a team that involved planning some dungeons around the lane post, stating it. And at that meeting, it was determined that the, the school would need to obtain a variance, which is the first time we had heard that regarding the lighting plan. Our lighting plan had been out there on a number of occasions. And that the actual East Washington post wasn't necessarily the issue. There were other lamp posts that fell within a 40-foot setback regulation based from residential property. So that was news to us, a little bit of a surprise to us. I would tell you that I felt at the meeting that this was something that had to be done for their code, but I didn't feel that it was something that was going to happen in that regard. Since that time, we've had conversations with Rob Jimson, Village Administrator, our architects. Our variance paperwork was filled out that Friday and turned in on Monday. We have an August 13th meeting with BZA. I've also kind of asked the questions about, could this potentially impact occupancy? I've been told that is not the case. This would not impact occupancy. So I don't believe this will be an issue that would impact the opening of the school. I also believe Village has been and continue to be very supportive in trying to bring this, you know, this issue as well as the whole building, and the things that we've had to deal with, foreclosure, or a lot of path for us to get toward. So that's a lot, and it's quick. Would you board history? I'm happy to answer any questions, or is there something that you need to, you know, understand better? Certainly happy to do that.
If I would just add that I think we can make a very strong case for why on such a tight campus, that having our lights 40 feet from any adjoining property line would make it impossible to have safety and security that would be warranted for that campus. And so I know we're prepared to make that discussion. So we're not really expecting any opposition to the variance request because we can substantiate that the lighting plan meets state and national standards.
Correct.
For what's needed. It's been very thoughtfully executed. It's just like many of these properties in our little village. It's a tight space to fit in a lot of these capabilities that would be required.
And I think it's important to note, we actually have less or fewer lamp posts and lights on our site than we did when we began the process. So there's at least two, two less lamp posts. So I think that helps.
Okay. Mrs. Bruno, would you please take the roll? I'm sorry, do we need to take the roll?
Yeah, that was just a report.
I'm sorry, that was just a report. I'm going, so we're moving on to consent agenda items, and I'm going to separate out the first consent agenda item so that Mr. Kanziger can abstain, since that item relates to his wife. So can I have a motion for consent agenda item 8A?
Seven.
And a second? Moved by Mrs. Bros and seconded by Mr. Rankin. Any discussion? Okay, Mrs. Bruno, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Abstain.
And Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for consent agenda items 8B through 8AG?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Bros, seconded by Mrs. O'Toole. Any discussion here? Anything you want to point out, Mr. Hunt?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
But maybe other than any personnel that would be additional staff on a budget would cover my recommendations on.
Okay.
All of these would be replaced with.
Yeah, okay, great. Mrs. Bruno, would you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Okay, now, can I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations, 9A through 9H?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. O'Toole, seconded by Mr. Rankin. Mr. Hunt, can you speak to these?
Sure. Item A is a recommendation to approve some carryover vacation for Chris Wolfter. He also has had a difficult time over the last two summers getting vacation in. And we appreciate that we rolled that over and obviously utilize that in the next calendar year. Item B is the resignation of Diane Dobies, who will hopefully be unemployed for about five minutes. She has a recommendation that I'll go back here shortly. Item C is the temporary hire recommendation of a member of the, in which she's going to rejoin the staff as a position's guidance counselor for one additional year, help the transition in the building as well as, you know, campaign to improve and things of that nature. Item D is all, are all recommendations related to preschool. Item E is additional payments due to the needs and special education students using who we're working on. We point out there as well, those are not additions. Item F is the second premium board policy. I believe we captured some of the changes that were discussed in our last meeting. I would tell you that this is a popular policy, and we know a lot of people calling on it, and it's a great sign that this space is going to be utilized by our community as well. Item G is a recommendation for a supplemental package that will be used in community education purchased out of their budget. The system they were using to process payments has become antiquated, so a lot of being support is going to transition over to this. And we point out here, there were also analog with CAA, CSA, the rec, and we'll be adding different systems that maybe we can collaborate on in terms of purchasing, and maybe there's some opportunities for savings going forward. Then item H is a resolution on rising the change orders as discussed by Mrs. Ash earlier.
Any further discussion?
I'm just on item DG. When I looked at the pricing on it and the volume requirement of 100, is that 100? Does that seem reasonable, that the credit person that vetted this whole system?
Yeah, and I, and I do have a spreadsheet about each systems that were vetted and evaluated. There is potential this would be the system that we can use on a larger scale with the other organizations. But that decision has not been made. We've selected three that have come back and came to network and very, they make very clear, this is kind of a temporary position. We're going to give a six-month contract, and that's why we will have term because we've got this other kind of larger, broader evaluation.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mrs. Bruno, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Can I have a motion for treasurer's recommendations, 10A through G?
No move.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kanziger, seconded by Mrs. Bros. Mrs. Bruno, would you like to walk us through these?
Absolutely. Item A is a recommendation to establish an agency fund, which will be Fund 022. This is to account for unclaimed funds, so currently we have no mechanism to remove old stale outstanding checks, once we have made our attempts to get them paid. The revised code does require that if we write those off, we move them into an unclaimed funds account, and then we start a five-year clock on those, so they sit in that, in that account for five years. Then, at the end of that five years, we can move those unclaimed funds back to the account from which they were written. The reason that it needs to be approved is just this fund, certain funds according to USAS and according to the Auditor of State require Auditor of State and board approval. So once I receive approval here, I will send it down to the state to get their approval, and then we can start getting some of those old items off of our books and get it cleaned up. Item B is an increase to appropriations for the grant funds there. These were just an oversight on my part. I don't know if I missed them, but I did not include them in my current appropriations measure, so these are just the initial appropriations for those grant funds there. Item C is a recommendation to employ Diane Dobies as fiscal specialist accounts payable for 260-day contract and an annual salary of $46,463, effective August 1st. This is to replace, we will be severing our relationship with Metta Schools, who's been providing some accounts payable services for us, but certainly not covering the entire accounts payable function. This is going to allow us to provide the type of service that we want to be able to provide for our community and for our employees, and to be able to help them through the purchasing process, and have somebody on site all day, every day, to help us process accounts payable properly. That is the same salary that she is currently receiving under the MOU that was established, plus the 2% that everyone, all of those positions received starting for this fiscal year. Item D is a recommendation to approve a job description for an assistant treasurer. This is to, this is not, once we fill this position, this will not be a new position. The district has had an assistant treasurer in the past. This would be replacing the assistant to the treasurer. Right now, the structure has been for the last couple of years to have an assistant to the treasurer, which is mainly just an administrative assistant. After some time and going through the operations of the district and the type of service that we want to provide, and everything that was said to me in all of my conversations as I started over the last two months, even during my interviews before I started here, it was really clear that this district wants a more customer service friendly treasurer's department. This will enable me to provide that type of service with an administrative assistant who doesn't necessarily enter accounting transactions and doesn't really have an accounting background. That puts all of that into my office, and then it takes up a little bit more of my time so that I can't, you know, maybe return phone calls as fast and, and things like that. So putting a person in that position as an assistant treasurer rather than an assistant to the treasurer will allow us just as a department to function a little more efficiently and to be the type of treasurer's office that, that the district and the community desire.
Can you pause for a minute, that might make sense for us to discuss that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before you go into the report. So I just want to say, we've been advised for a long time that the staffing in the treasurer's department is a little bit on the light side when you compare to comparable districts. I think even Chris Moore mentioned to us that that might be something we would want to consider. And I just want to applaud you for coming up with a really creative solution where we're doing more with the same number of people.
Right.
But still meeting the needs and specifications of what needs to happen in the department. So I think it's a great creative solution that will, as you said, we need to provide the customer service, the type of outreach to the community, that we expect, the type of information the board expects from the treasurer's office. So thank you for, for that.
And then moving on to item E. This is a then-announced certificate for video equipment. The reason for this is the, the original PO was made out to American Express rather than Amazon. The decision was made to purchase the items from Amazon because it happened over the closing of the fiscal year. Once I've closed the fiscal year, I cannot amend a purchase order. So the purchase order was written before the order was made, but it was in June. And once I close the year, I can't change the purchase order, so I can't even change the vendor on it. So we did have to close that PO, open a new one, which was after they had placed the order. So that's the reason for that one. Item F is a donation from David J. Riley for a metal art wall sculpture, which is actually really cool. If anybody has seen it, it's really neat.
Did you bring it in the meeting?
Yes. I should have. It is really cool. And then I will move on to item G and start discussing the financial reports. If anybody, if there are any questions on the previous items, I'd like to cover those before we move on to the reports. Okay, so moving on to the financial reports. We'll go ahead and go to the first one. So the first report is the general fund summary report, and that is really small up there. This covers the entire fiscal year. Every column there is a month. All the way over to the right, you'll see the total for the whole fiscal year. I tried to highlight, to try to point out the really important lines. The lines highlighted there in orange, the first one, 2.08, that's your total revenue for the year, which is just over $31 million. And then moving down to line 5.05, that's your total expenditures, which is just under 32, which results in a spending deficit of $850,606, and a final ending cash balance of just over $13 million.
Can I have you pause just for a second? Chris, would it be possible to have the camera on the slide?
Sure. These are on the agenda.
They're late, so someone can look at them.
Yeah.
Instead of watching me drink water, they might want to see who I'm actually talking about.
So this report is set up like the SM2 report that you've seen in the past, which is really just a system-generated report, but it breaks things down by the forecast line, which is how we, we tend to look at things. That's our most important planning document as a district, so this should correlate to our, to our five-year forecast.
That's a helpful change for me too, because people probably don't even realize when you're in your office how much you talk about things by the code and the lines. And so it will help me to start becoming more familiar with it.
Great. Okay, so moving on to the next report. This one again is four Bennett like the five-year forecast. During our fiscal committee meeting, we had some discussion that it would be helpful to kind of show our actual versus our forecasted numbers. So this is the end of the fiscal year, so I had the whole fiscal year to compare. The first column there with numbers is the October forecast, so those are the numbers that were in the October forecast. Next column is the May forecast, and then the third column is the actual numbers. The two columns off to the right, those are the variances. So the first one is the variance from the October, and then the second one is the variance from the May. The largest variance there, you'll see, and I did not highlight it there, I highlighted it on my own sheet, I shouldn't have done it on the actual report, but the largest variance there is the 69% on the restricted grants and aid. The reason for that is the catastrophic cost reimbursement was estimated at $63,000, and we actually received $107,000. Catastrophic cost is, is pretty unpredictable. The way that works is, we submit for all of the amounts that, that exceed an amount per student, but the state has a number set for the entire state. That's their appropriation for catastrophic cost. So we all have 600, when we had 11, 12 districts, we all submit our total, and then they take a percentage and say, okay, well, you submitted this much, but we only have this much, and it's only 32%. So you all get 32% of what you submitted for. So it really depends on not only our catastrophic cost that we submit, but the entire state as well. And that's really difficult to predict. So this year, we did submit for $336,000. We received $107,000. The, that dispersion was 32%. So that's the reason for the variance there. Rest of the variances, I don't think are too significant, given the dollar and percent. Obviously, 100% on the advances is just because we did not budget for advances, and we made those advances in June to cover the negative balances in the, the grant funds. Any questions on this? I know this one, there's a lot of information, and it's kind of trying to make it as clear as possible.
The only thing I'd be curious about and not be able to answer to tonight, but we, we were hoping to achieve some significant healthcare savings with the new healthcare plan and the negotiated agreement. It'd be interesting to see now that we've had almost 12 months with that plan, you know, how we're tracking.
I will tell you that you'll, just based on the information that I have, I haven't looked at it, but I know that you're going to see those savings in a future year. You would not have seen it in this year because of the initial payments that we agreed to make out to everybody.
Right.
So that took up pretty much the savings for this year.
Right.
So you'll see that in future years.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to the general fund revenue. So this is a summary of the revenue, just in the general fund. Again, I broke it down by forecast line, so you can trace things back to the five-year forecast if you like. This is for the whole fiscal year going forward. I will probably put a column for your month to date, and then a column for your fiscal to date. The pie chart there, I just like to show where our money comes from. You can see the largest slice of the pie there is 76% of our general property taxes. And then that red portion there is another 3.5%, that's public utility taxes. So nearly 80% of our revenue is coming from, from our tax base. So that really just demonstrates our reliance on our taxes and how little state money we get. The purple slice there is the state money. That's the foundation money. The state, I don't know how much of this you have followed, but the, the state bill was just signed into law. It's, it's kind of interesting, it's, they're not using a formula for the next two years to come up with our base aid. Our base aid is just strictly, this is for every district in the state. Your base aid for 20 and 21 is your base aid amount that you received for 19. So that's actually good. That means it's not decreasing. It's not really going up, but it's not decreasing. And then they did add the wellness dollars to the budgets. Right now, we're projected to get about $55,000 in wellness dollars. So that's great. So that is overall is an increase in our state money. Certainly that, that wellness aid is going to be restricted to certain expenditures. Probably some more reporting requirements for us.
I'm just going to inject a little bit, the board did approve, well, not yet, they I'm just going to inject a little bit. The board did approve the contract, well, not yet, they haven't approved the contract. They've outsourced it to a health professional and it aligns actually with less than what that state is. So, that would be a draw for our budget, this initial.
And then the other significant portion of our revenue is the home sub rollback. It's about 10%. Those are the reimbursements that we get from the state for the loss of that tax write-down. Moving on to the expenditures. Again, this is only covering general fund and I've broken it down by forecast line. So, I have two pie charts here to show you. I'm going to start with the bottom one. That's total expenditures. So, you can see the blue part, the large blue piece of the pie is our salaries and the yellow is our benefits. So, you can see about 75% of our expenditures are on our people. And that is as it should be. That's what we do. We educate children with our, our teachers. We need our staff to run our buildings. That is pretty consistent across the state. Then moving up to the salary, the pie chart above that one, that one breaks your salaries down. Salaries is, is an important piece to most people who are looking at our expenditures. They want to see what, what we're spending, how those salaries are broken down. So, those two orange slices, the lighter orange and the darker orange, those are instructional. So, those are direct instruction costs in the classroom, people working direct with students. Then the purple piece of the pie there too, that's the support services. Those are also people dealing with children. So, it's in the, in the classroom. It's just not necessarily your teacher. So, it's your classroom aides and, and things like that. So, those are dollars that are going into your students. It's just not, it's just a different code. It's not your instructional employees. And then 9% there for administration and then 6% for custodial, almost 5% for transportation and then down. So, most of your dollars, which is what people want to see, where's it going? It is going toward, toward the students. They're not out of whack in our percentages, in my opinion. I think our percentages look great.
Do you get like information from the state of Ohio, like what?
How we compare to others?
Yeah.
I do. I can get that from the help report if you'd like to, to see if there are... Interesting, because I have information from every single district. If you, I can compare to county. I can compare to who we consider our peers, because who we consider our peers is not who the state considers our peers. I can break it down however, however you want me to compare, I can certainly do that.
Yeah, maybe just seeing it compared to our regular comparables that we do all the time and maybe the state as a whole. I mean, I trust your judgment. If it's in line with everything, but it'd be interesting to see the data.
Probably be more on an annual basis. It's not something I would put in every month, but...
That's a great way to look at it. I mean, pictorially plus data, it's a great way to look at this. I like what you've done.
Okay, moving on to the financial summary. This is all of your funds, broken down by fund. This used to be presented as a system-generated report, so it's similar information that you should be used to, but it was broken down by fund and special cost center, which created like a 20-page report. So, this, I think, just giving a fund level at this point is, is what we, I think is the most important. If at some point there's something you want broken down further, absolutely agree that. Your general fund cash balance there should trace to all of the previous reports that I just presented, your fiscal-to-date revenue, your fiscal-to-date expenditures, those should all agree. If they don't, please pay attention.
Yeah, I mean...
I already did that. Okay, good.
Especially interesting to see the cash fund balance and the encumbrances, especially the unencumbered balance, projected balance essentially.
Yeah, that, that negative there on the 516, that's ID of you. That's a front overhand. We will get that money back from the feds. Moving on, this is just the bank reconciliation for the month of June. Total book balance of $25,727,000. There was one adjusting entry to the bank reconciliation, which was just a direct deposit that, I don't know if the account was closed or changed or whatever. We had to void that direct deposit, reissue it as a check, so it was expensed on 6/30. We didn't get the direct deposit back into our bank until after 6/30. So, it had to be carried as an item. Moving on. This is just a summary of where all of our money is. You can see most of it is there in Star Ohio. Estimated yield on Star Ohio right now is about 2.5%. So, I'm holding money in there until I need it in my checking accounts and then moving it to those accounts. The investment management account is the fifth-third and then there's a more detailed breakdown of all of the money that is in that investment management account on the next page. It just lists every single one of the securities.
Are you looking at consolidating those or in one bank instead of having them spread out or?
For the checking accounts or?
Oh, either, yeah.
Well, our current checking accounts are the KeyBank. That's the $5 million there. You see, that's for our, our accounts payable checks and our payable checks. It's your two different checking accounts and that is the way you want it to be. You need those separate. And then the money market account there, that is the food service account. So, it's in a separate bank account because it makes my life easier and it makes their life easier. They, when they, because they make a deposit every single day. It's just there and then we get our, the monies from the online purchases as well are going right on there. So, we actually just opened up another one of these fifth-third accounts exactly like the food service account, which is going to be for the new coffee shop at the high school. And it's going to be the same, just keeping all of those separate. It's just kind of easier.
I understand different accounts and the value that you had mentioned before, that we have a variety of accounts at different banks.
Yeah, the, the bank isn't really my issue. I think my, my problem, not problem, but, but my concern is all of the different online sources that we have. Every single department who wants to take online payments has a different platform. So, that at some point, we might want to look at consolidating those. But, I mean, they do all want different features as well. So, I can't just come in and say, hey, you're going to use this one, because that might not really work for them. And I just haven't had a chance to talk to all of the individual departments and see what works for them. And then I don't think I need to go through all the individual securities, but they're there. They're interesting. So, that is it for my monthly reports.
Did you want to mention the checking report that we used to get that now we're looking at doing differently?
The checking report? Oh, the actual checks that we cut? So, yeah, you have received reports previously of every check. I'm more than happy to throw those on here. Having a board actually approve those after the fact is kind of pointless. The checks are written. Most of them are cash by the time you see this. So, it's really just reporting them out. What I would recommend is to, I did not approve them here. I don't think that it necessarily is a board report. Information is always there for anybody. I, I think I will probably try to post them on our website, so if anybody really wants them, you know, they can do that. They can look. But I really would like to talk about with the board, going to the state's Ohio checkbook. I think it's a really neat tool. I think people can go out and they can look at every single one of our checks. It's just, it's a, it's a matter of me uploading something at the end of every month to the state's website and then they can run, they can create graphs, they can create charts, they can see, you know, they can break it down by whatever it is, however they want to break it down. If they want to break it down, how I have, by instruction versus non-instruction. If they want to break it down by supplies versus equipment or however it is that they want to look at our expenditures, it's all there.
Just for transparency.
Yeah, it, it really is a nice tool. And then that way, you know, sometimes people don't even really know what it is they're looking for. You know, because I can sit here all day and say, just ask me, I'll provide it. Well, they don't really even know what to ask sometimes. So, if it's out there and they can just go kind of play around and click away, then maybe, you know, they can form a question to come ask. So, I, I would like to get there. I have not spoken to the state yet, but it is a simple process. So, that's maybe just some discussions we need to have as a group.
And, and we did talk in the committee. Anne Spano had looked at it before. I went to a meeting on it before when it was new. And our feeling was, don't be the early adopter on that. Let's see how it goes. But several years down the road and Ashley has used it elsewhere. It seems like it's a good thing.
Yeah, I, I just, I think people like it. It just makes it easier for them to find the information. You know, every single thing that we do is there, so it's easy for them to look for rather than... You know, some people are kind of intimidated to maybe call and ask. They feel like they don't want to give me one more thing to do or, you know, maybe they just, like I said, don't even know what to ask for. So, having it out there, so they can go whenever they want and look it up, I think is, is, I'm not too bad about that.
That's your report?
My portion of the agenda.
Is there any other discussion?
You know, I just want to say, that is lovely. And please don't feel the need, you apologize that you didn't have it, get it done over the weekend. Please do not think that you have to have, if you didn't have it the Friday before our Wednesday meeting, you just need to say like, I don't have it Southern Friday. I'll have it on Monday. You do not need to spend your weekend doing it.
I, I just, I know you have lives as well. I want to present something to you and say, you have to look at this right now. So, no, that was just, it was a busy week and, you know, staff is still on the pool.
And you're in, you're new. Yes, I mean...
Well, and you organized it well enough to read quickly. So, you made it really easy.
It was worth the wait.
Good. Good.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Bruno, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any other, other business? The next meeting will be Wednesday, August 14th at 6 o'clock in this room. May I have a motion for executive session?
In accordance with the Ohio revised Code 12122, the Children's Department of Education will go into executive session for the sole purpose of the consideration of any of the following matters: employment and investigation of charges, complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual.
May I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rankin, seconded by Mrs. Bros. Mrs. Bruno, would you take the role?
Mrs. Garvey?
Yes.
Mrs. Bros?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole?
Yes.
Mr. Kanziger?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
And just as an announcement, we don't have any action. We're not expecting any action after executive session. I have a motion for, all right, we're all set. So, let's see where... Note the time.
Forty-four minutes, 23 minutes.
We're not done, all right? Well, I would, that's the only part I'm in control of. I got it since...